I think we've got everybody in on Zoom, so whenever you're ready Travis.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Eckler. Card. She's on there, Phyllis, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear.
I'm here.
Here. Here you call my name.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here. Any conflict of interest declaration? Hearing none, approve agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Eckler.
Yes, motion passes. There's no minutes for this week, they'll be, we'll just have two sets on the 20th.
Correct.
20th.
Yep.
It's gonna be, uh, visitors be heard.
Yep, the button needs to be up.
Am I coming through okay?
Yep.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Harold Timmerman from Lincoln County Emergency Management, I'm here today to do a special presentation for somebody you know quite well. Uh, each year we're allowed to nominate someone for our emergency manager person of the year. And, uh, I'm gonna read a little letter that I wrote to our state board. Each year we're given the opportunity to nominate someone from our emergency management group as the emergency manager of the year. I would like to nominate an individual who has served as emergency manager in his county for nearly twenty years. During this time, he not only does an excellent job in this county, but has also been a valuable asset to his region and the State Emergency Management Association. During his tenure, he has served as region vice president several times, communicating information from the state board to our region and bringing region concerns to the state board association. Several times difficult circumstances for him and his family, complicated efforts to perform his job. However, everything always got done. He's always willing to step forward and say, I'll do that for our region. The State Emergency Management Association, Region One, and Clay County have received great benefits from Lane Stewart being part of our group. Please accept my nomination for Lane as our 2022 Emergency Manager of the Year. Harold Timmerman, Lincoln County Emergency Management. Lane, if you'll come forward, I have a, an award, we can get that on. Lane can't come to our conference this year, so we're gonna get turned around.
Yeah.
So, I was asked to get this done beforehand, so this recording can be played at our conference at a banquet on the night of the fourteenth. Lane, congratulations, it's long overdue.
You got a good one buddy?
Yeah, yeah, this is not my, um, anyway, uh, thank you to Harold for doing this, um, and again, this is for the banquet, so, um, I'm kinda talking to two different crowds here in a way, but, uh, just thanks for this, um, I don't think I do anything that Harold or any of the other emergency managers don't do. Um, you know, do what we can, when we can, and call it good, but, thanks, and for those at the banquet, have fun.
Thanks Lane. Congratulations. Any other visitors to be heard? Hearing none, Nick? You're on the agenda.
Yeah. For what you asked for?
The drainage. On Wimps.
I guess I'm just looking.
You ought to come up here.
Hello everyone, I'm Nick Slattery, um, one of the owners with, uh, Wimps on Toby's, um, Jane's Voice is our company. Um, since we bought it, we've kinda run into some things that just kinda like, I'd like to address, uh, as far as drainage goes, and, uh, I wanna make sure you guys are all clear that I'm willing to help at any point in time to make it work better for everybody, both county, the local people around there, and, and the patrons that come to Wimps, uh, on a really rainy day. Uh, what, what I've come to find out is that the, there's a drainage ditch, yeah, we're right on the border there, it's difficult for everybody to deal with, but we do have a problem, water runs into the basement, water runs out in front of the building, and it's very high, so on a, on a, on a good event. Um, and I'd just like to figure out a way to get that to go away. Uh, one of my ideas that I can move forward with would be to help build some kind of a non-permeable ditch system that would run that length, so that it continues to flow out to the, to the east. Um, but it would be impermeable, there would not be a saturation point at that, at that area. Uh, if we need to do some kind of a, uh, an enclosure or a tank or something, so that it actually dissipates, I'm all for that, I just, I'd like some assistance, just to get it planned accordingly, so that it's, I'm following the rules, everybody's on the same page, and it's safe, because that, the road there is obviously dangerous when it gets wet, and I'm just looking out for everybody, everybody that's coming there, really, I mean, you come out there and it's, you get a wet, really hard rain, and you can't see, so it's just, it's more about protection and safety. Um, and it'd be nice to keep water out of the basement. So, if you guys could help out, if you got any questions, I, I'm here, so, thank you.
So which way is that water supposed to go, is it supposed to keep going east or west?
The way it's designed, it looks like it's come, it's going east. And if you throw a laser on it, and it, it looks like it's supposed to go east, but you get to the other side of the, the approach, um, the east side of Wimps, then it becomes housing, and so I don't want to create a problem for water backing up or flow going that direction. Uh, if it's gonna require some kind of a holding area or something like that for it to saturate and go away, great. Um, you know, we've designed these in town, all over the place, to catch water, so it has time to dissipate. Um, I just, I'd like a little assistance on doing it together, and I'll do whatever I have to do, so, um, I just wanna make it right.
Do you have an area there that you could have a saturation point?
We're flat, so that's, that's where I'm, I'm asking first, if this were something that I could handle in my own wheelhouse, love to do it, but I think it has to be a joint venture, because of the street coming off of White Street, and how the, how it dips down, that might have to have some kind of a, a catch area where it, it catches there and then goes through a hard piping, or, or we catch it into a sealed basin that goes out, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure yet, so I, without exact specifics from the powers that be, it's hard to make a judgment call on what I would do for other people involved, you know, the, the county itself, county supervisors, um, you know, boss man, and, and everybody included, so. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm available to answer any questions or help with the problem, right now it's not a big deal, we haven't, I mean, I'm sorry, we haven't had any water, but, um, you know, it's just one of those things that I'm looking toward the future on, so if we're gonna do anything down there, alright?
Do you, do you know about what, uh, number of inches of brain that you start having a problem with?
Uh, well.
You know, after it crosses out, across.
Yeah.
Throws everything.
I mean, at, at one inch, it starts to, to, well, no, it just fills up out front, and if the saturation point is already peaked, then it goes in slower, obviously, so, but if it's dry like it is now, it's, you know, it goes straight down, so, um, and, and that's part, partly my issue, which I, I can resolve at the same point, but I don't wanna waste a bunch of time doing that and spending a bunch of money, if it's not gonna totally cure the problem on the corner. You know, that corner fills up with water, and there's, there's a foot of water there, and it fills a foot of water in front of each of the approaches on White Street. So, you know, it, it doesn't matter how it got to that point, it's how we're gonna correct it, um, and it sets pretty flat there. Do we need to put a basin on the south end of White Street, maybe, maybe that's an idea, uh, so the water goes that way, but it's pretty flat running along there if you run a laser on it, so. It just needs one direction to go one way or the other, if it gets stopped up one way or the other, depending on, you know, what's going on, then it's, it's not gonna go anywhere, but if it has a place to go, it'll slowly trickle that way, at least it's not sitting there.
Does the, your parking lot puddle up pretty badly to them?
No, it, uh, the way it was graded originally, it, it's okay, the neighbors are taking, you know, or the property lines are taking where it should, and dissipates out, I don't see any water standing in anybody's property. You know, if we've got a puddle in the parking lot, it's, because it's a bad spot, you know, it's, it shouldn't be there. And I've taken the liberty of making sure that we're grading properly now, and, and we're opening it up so that it's permeable, it's not just setting on top of the rocks, so. Um, but I, I'd like to, I'd like to make it better for the patrons, for the local people that live there, I mean, it's kind of a bad deal, so.
And it puddles up just west of the front door there.
Yeah. In the ditch, or in the, in the, in the flow line of the, of the gutter, and it'll stay full all the way across there, once that ditch fills up, on the, the north side. So, that water gets full in there, and it'll stay that full, and it does seem to dissipate to the east.
So that flows around the building.
Supposed to.
Down, down the south ditch of Burbank Road.
Yes.
How's our culverts over there, Rod?
Well, that's what I was gonna say, quite a few years back, the former owner came into the commission, and we had Johnson Engineering do a study there, and we ended up putting culverts solid, from just east of Wimps, all the way, I believe there's two approaches east of Wimps, so there's solid culverts, we filled in the ditch, laid a culvert under there, now everybody has flat ground there. So we run the pipe from right east side of Wimps, all the way to that ditch. I don't remember what, uh, East Street is called, but the part of East Street, East of Wimps, that was their solution, and this is the first time I've heard any more about it, so. And that was probably before the Missouri River flood. So how long you been on the board?
Ten years, but that was in eleven.
So it was before that, when we did this, I'd have to look up. But I should be able to find the plans that Johnson's had, but it's, it's like you said, it's right on the white line of the highway, the road has a crown, it's lower than the road.
So I, you know.
Well, one, the one, one solution that I had was to make it impermeable, and that would be to run either a solid, a solid, non-perforated pipe, either cut in half, so that it was exposed to air, uh, so it would dry out, or, or a solid pipe that runs down there that is permeable from the top, and then that would carry the water out, you know, further, further past. My biggest concern on that is over, or experience over a period of time, is we have water moving that quick, it's gonna pool somewhere. And so, knowing that, I don't want to, again, I don't want to make it bad for the, the residents that live along Burbank Road, because that's, that would, in my opinion, would make that happen. But if we could get it so that it was coming around, excuse me, coming around that corner, and then maybe past the building, it becomes perforated, so it can saturate into the ground, but it's solid all the way around the building, so that it can get out, you know, and, and, and again, it might need to go south too, on White Street, so you're going from the corner, both directions, south and east, so that's, that's what I'm asking to look into. Any other questions?
Sounds like it's designed now to alleviate, you know, so there wouldn't be problems with the neighbors to the east if it's a solid culvert, depends on what the out, where the out, or the inlets are, right at the corner, I suppose.
It's right at the corner.
Yeah, and then, uh, that would deliver all the water that's puddling there for you, should deliver all the way to the east.
Now, without, and one of the other thoughts that I had was to build a retaining wall right on the corner, that's impermeable, you know, it'd be a, a brick wall that has got a rubber membrane on it or something, and then that would raise that corner, uh, so that when the water does go, it does go south and east, and doesn't just sit there, because right now it's just pooling there until it can actually saturate that one direction, which is east, and so that, it, it does the job, yes, but it doesn't fix it over that little bit of time, and I'm not sure if that's a calculus and, or a thought that people are using, oh, we'll just let it dissipate in a couple of days. I, I, I just, I don't necessarily agree with that, if there's another solution.
Sounds like that's not the way it's designed, it should carry away if it's laying that corner.
You know, and I can understand, because I do a lot of flat grade, a lot, and vermillion, so that the water doesn't go anywhere, because we have water problem here. So, if, if we do flat grade there, it's, it was designed for that reason, I just, I'm not sure that that's the exact answer for this situation. Um, I, I understand dissipating over a big area, but we're talking about three feet. And so when it caught, when it catches, it catches and pools. Um, I'm not a rocket scientist, I'm not a water designer, I cannot predict what Mother Nature's gonna do, all's I'm trying to do is make it safer. And so if there's anything that I can do to help with that, I promise you I will, so I just want a good, uh, happy environment for residents and for our patrons, okay?
So Rod, is there, are there utilities in that ditch, you know?
Boy, I couldn't tell you.
It, everything's above. It's all up.
Yeah.
It's up.
The only reason I ask is, you know, if you drop a tile, you know, like a twelve inch tile in that ditch, to, uh, well, to an upright culvert, and then have a variable pump on that.
Yep.
And just dump it right into that culvert that goes east. That would at least take care of the excess water, so if it did rain and puddle, it can go in right away.
Right.
And that tile will keep taking that excess to that very home.
A, and, and what we would, I get, I get the idea, but where would we put the pump water?
Pump it to that culvert going east, it should stay in the ditch then.
Oh, okay, alright, I'm gonna, yeah, right on the corner, okay.
Well, there's, there's culverts to the east, that's solid, east of Wimps.
Yeah, if, if you can get it, if it gets that far, and that's why.
If you tiled the ground and made that tile, drained that.
Yep.
We'll call it a sister, and then pump out of there, and that way with the, the heavier, if you put a variable pump in there, the heavier flow, it'll speed up, or it'll slow down, whatever it needs to do. And that should, you know, if you buried a twelve inch tile three feet deep, it's gonna give you a lot of, yeah, it's gonna get rid of the water fast too.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm all for it.
It's all uphill to, like, from that corner in front of Wimps to.
To the east.
To the east, so, uh, pipe for the pump is gonna have to be above ground somewhere.
Right, it's gonna, it's gonna get pumped out.
Unless they go out in the road, there's no room there between Wimps and, and edge of the road for about anything, is there?
Well, there's room for a twelve inch tile to be dug in.
Yeah.
Is there that much room between the edge and the middle?
Yep. Yeah, we can get in there, and, and it would, if we leveled that off down below, it, it, it would, I mean, you could have top, you could have surface water going out, and.
Well, I think your surface water's gonna go, I mean, if you put a twelve inch tile, which is overkill.
Yeah.
Big time.
Yep.
You're gonna get rid of that surface water in a matter of hours, it'll never get to your basement.
Okay.
What about the person that's further east there, probably a half mile?
Well, it's gotta stay in the ditch.
So it should be alright.
I mean, I'm not saying that it's.
Like, oh yeah, that's what my biggest concern was pooling, and then once you got water pooling and saturation, when you get a full saturation point, where's it going? The only place it can go, somebody's basement.
Well, it's gotta keep moving east.
Yeah, so, I just don't wanna come, I don't want, I don't wanna push it to somebody else.
You know that one.
Yes, I do, yep, yep, Steve's, so, yep, Steve Gaps.
I think it kinda wants to go south, right there too.
That's what I was worried, they go, wanna go south there.
Cause I'm not sure about the road ditch, there's pretty level, to get it out towards, you can't remember, there's an old dirt road goes to the river.
Yeah.
That's pretty level across there, and I, since we put those pipe in, I guess I've never seen water run through it, so.
Yeah, it sets right there in the ditch, right, it never gets through or past that first approach, I've never seen it go past the approach, but then, you know, I, it hasn't been, there hasn't been water like we've had in the past.
So I do think the pump idea is a good idea.
We have limited space to work with, it's about the only.
Well, once you put the pump on the east side of Wimps though, and not the west, tile it from the west to the east.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I want, I'd want the pump by those.
The so-called sister is on the east.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be anything more than just a tall inch vertical pit.
Well, you put a bigger one.
Okay.
It'd probably be a three foot.
All three footer? Okay, yeah, I suppose it keeps that much more.
And you've got a concrete block basement, I assume, right?
Yep.
Word.
Yep.
And, and you've got sump pumps, but you don't have a perimeter.
Correct. Yeah, I've got, uh, one sump pump, but, and that's basically surface water that, you know, you're not, you're only catching what's just coming right up, you know, underneath the footing. So, um, and that at times gets to be overflowing, so, and regardless with that, it's, it's more about the up, I can, I could probably fix that at some point, but I think to do that, I'm gonna do it at the same time, you know, fix that perimeter wall, rubber, rubberized membrane on the outside, then fill it with the appropriate aggregate, and then get the tile in there the way it's supposed to be done. So, and I, I really think that's a good idea, so, thank you.
That's, that's one of the ways that I fixed a few problems like that.
Okay.
But we gotta make sure that it keeps moving.
You bet.
Yep.
Well.
Yep, yeah, one and done, let's, I don't wanna do it more than.
Yeah. And Johnson Engineering's study's gonna be a good starting point for us, we've already paid for that once, we just wanna use it.
Okay, is there someone that I should contact or?
I'll get a hold of them.
Alright.
Give you a copy.
Okay, sounds good. Alright. Thank you.
I just remembered, we were talking about, if not more.
And if there's a better way to go with that water, I mean, if, if you were to put a pump in, we can make it go wherever.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if south might be an option, you know, but that would be pulling up, you know, we, if we're gonna do it right, we'd have to pull up that curb and gutter and, and basically redo it at that point. Um, it's all flat, yeah, but I don't know if there's any gonna be, I mean, they've talked, there's a bunch of rumors, people talk about wanting to build further down there, and stuff like that, but, regardless, you know, if, if we're taking more roof water off, if there are homes gonna be built down there, all that water's gonna come, it's either gonna lay flat, or it's gonna have to pitch to the south. You know, one way or the other, one sec gets built in the future, so. Um, you know, and if, if I'm around and, and I can help protect that as things are, as things progress, I'm all about, you know, progressive movement and getting things built and doing that, I'll be a part of that, I'll help with some of that design work. Uh, but let's just, I wanna try to fix this one now, so that we don't have any trouble for neighbors and patrons, so. Again, done, one, done. Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Thanks Nick.
Rod? Denny's Plumbing?
So, I brought this up in front of you, because we're on East Main, north side of the road, and as you all know, the city has this East Main right straight down the center line. And we had driveway, a couple driveway applications that we switched back to the city because of, uh, you know, their annexation or whatever that, the line is. But, they wanna dig a six by four hole in the road, and then hook it to a manhole that's already there. And I don't know, I've never had anybody ask me about that, because we usually don't have manholes in the county roads. So that's why I wondered, is this shit going in front of the seaborne instead of us, I'm not sure.
So where actually is this?
It's the, that little log cabin, about the first thing, onto the county road East Main, after the concrete, they just built a little log cabin there on the north side of the road, twenty-five old, sixties main, that.
Yeah, we didn't get the map with our packet at least.
Oh.
It says it's on the back.
Yeah, well, it's handwritten.
I see. So did they turn around and first try to, uh?
So right here, it's about, you know, the end of the concrete street.
Yeah.
Then the manhole there, and they wanna dig the.
So the sewer line goes west from that, where they wanna put the manhole?
No.
It's already there?
Yeah, the sewer line has to go west of the manhole, from the hole. So I'm, I don't know, I'm curious, I'm not a sewer guy, but why wouldn't they dig it to the manhole?
Yeah, I'm not a sewer guy either, but I noticed that it says it, uh, it's, uh, an inch and a quarter IPS, uh, PLA, poly.
Supposed to be.
And, and so, is this like a gray water line, that's not big enough to do a sewer system? What's the scoop there?
You got me, I, this came in pretty late last week, and I've never heard of this Denny's Plumbing outside of the city either. But my question was, is that city jurisdiction, it's on that side of the city road?
Is it on their side?
Down our side, that blue line goes right down the center of East Main, remember a couple years ago, a year ago, guy wanted to put driveway in where that slough was, and we, we told him he had to go to the city, and apparently they didn't care, cause the driveway's in there.
So, this manhole that they want, or what?
No, manholes are there.
Well, what they're wanting us to approve, that's on the city side?
It's right in the center, yeah, you know, I mean, we're talking inches, but yes, the way I understood it, it's right in the center.
I see the city trucks out there, when they were doing the electricals. So I'm wondering if that's.
Rod, can you just get all of your questions answered first?
The north half of the, actually, all the property, the north of the center line is in the city limits.
Yeah, all the way out to, like Jim Johnson, four sixty-seven, maybe, four sixty-six, I don't remember the screen, I could have pulled up this one, but it didn't have.
It should definitely be a city problem, then I would guess.
Kinda what I was thinking.
And I, and I can't imagine, I can't imagine what they would be doing with a sewer line of that size, that's, that's pretty crazy.
I don't know what a normal sewer line is.
That'd be, that's good for gray water.
Plus, we should probably kick it to the city then?
I think so.
Just to, uh, cause eventually they're going to be in charge of it.
Yeah.
I mean, so, they might as well get it built right. I would assume so.
Yeah, we, I mean, as far as I know, Clay Johnny Highway Department don't have any sewer line, yet.
Since the.
That's the as duties is assigned.
Yeah, no, I got no.
Since the north side's in the city limits, I think it's gotta be a city issue.
So just pass this on, Jose?
Yep.
Sounds good.
What he says. Okay, just wanted, that's kinda what I'm thinking.
I would think we'd be happy to have further discussion if, if, uh, that doesn't end up being correct.
Yeah, that's, I mean, all the driveways they've been putting in recently, ever since the first one, I haven't got one since, I just assume they're. I just assumed they're talking to the city.
And they would be responsible for patching the black, blacktop.
Yes, that would have been mine. What you guys approved would include that too.
Better check that.
Back to us.
Yeah, better check that too.
Okay, I will send it up to the city and play home and see what happens.
Okay, now, anything else on that? Okay, structure fourteen, one forty, oh two, or oh twelve?
Yeah.
Is this the one Mike McGill came in and spoke about? Okay.
So Lexi Drew and I had a discussion like maybe the next day because there's so many people in the room, I wanna get out of there soon to good, sorry. When my stuff was done, but on the way back to the shop, I realized that when the county used to take care of all the small structures. So if you go north south from that bridge, quarter mile, there's a little creek back there, which he's saying that he can't cross. But there is a little bridge over that creek on the vacation town or township road. So I showed it to Lexi and Drew where he could come out of his field drive out there, go across that over to that six acres. According to Drew's picture of earlier, we couldn't really see the bridge. Well, this afternoon, unfortunately, this afternoon, Dennis and I are gonna take the drone up there, we're gonna fly out there. See if that little structure is there. But he's saying that the creek on the east side is just too steep to go across. But on the, our west side, I'm sorry, on the east side, David Olson is farming the whole place. Ain't even a waterway there. So I suggested, if it comes down to it, why can't we put a thirty inch culvert in that creek and give him a way to drive across there? But I don't think that is all up to us, Mike.
It's not, it's not.
This bridge has been closed for eight years. I never received one phone call except for David Olson asked me, are you gonna take it out because the kids are down there partying? And I said, yeah, sooner or later it's gonna come out. Well, we had it on that list for South Dakota to take it out. I didn't realize it was on the list. We had time to equipment, so we went out and took it out now. Soon as the bridge is gone, you couldn't cross that bridge except with an ATV. You shouldn't have been going across it all because we had it closed. So I don't see how he was ever gonna farm that piece eight years ago with that. Cause if we did, I think it was like around a hundred grand to get four piling put in, and then that would have brought it to a five ton bridge. So there's no way you're gonna ever go across with a track. So it was like, I believe he said there's eight acres out there.
Yep.
And, you know, it's just me, but he said, would you ever notice that bridge was coming out? But nobody ever gave me notice that that truck ground was coming out of CRP either.
But if they can solve it with a culvert on the south side, that seems fairly simple.
I would say that should be their problem to put it in.
And it will be.
But, uh, we're gonna go up and fly it, just see if that little wooden bridge is there. It's only like an eight footer, about eight plank, but it's narrow. But, and there's a driveway comes out of that road, that township road right south of there. So they, I mean, there's access, I would think even Mr. Olson would let him. And I, I couldn't hear everything Mr. McGill was saying, but did he not say that Mr. Olson would give him a way in and out?
He did. He said that.
So I guess I really don't know what we're, what I'm wasting time on, but.
Well, it sounded like Mike could try to resolve it with some different ideas, but it didn't sound like they wanted to do it.
Yeah, they'd be more of some devil where.
But if, that's the simplest solution, or put a culvert, have them put a culvert in, and it gets them across. If David's farming through on the west side or east side?
East side, yeah.
There's not much water coming.
No, that's what we looked through and I, Alexis looked at that it was, I don't know what, when was that picture taken?
That would have been last fall.
Last fall, so.
They throw a forty foot culvert in there, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Plus, we can't put it in there, we can't pay for it because the road's closed.
That's what I, well, so, you know, I heard a couple suggestions, that can't we just throw something in there? No, not Nash Creek.
No, not in that one.
No, no, some other places maybe, but not, I think that water comes from Beersford, clear up the camp. If I'm not, cause we did the study of, you know, we just did the university bridge there, and oh my God, that was, I thought it was overkill. Until two thousand nineteen, when the water was right up there next to the top of that bridge, I'm like, whoa. So, but those, that's my suggestions, we are gonna go fly it. So I could see for sure if that little bridge, it looks like there could be a tree there covering the shadow or it blew out the bridge. Which, I mean, if the bridge is there, that's about as good as the bridge we just took out. Same width, it's gonna be same width, sixteen feet wide. So I mean, if they're planning on driving across that other three span bridge, they shouldn't worry about going across there, but that's my feelings. I will let you know more after we fly it.
Okay.
How's the hair?
Hair just went down.
Okay.
Just fell back down.
Anything else, Rod?
Um, they are starting on the county line this morning, micro servicing. So that'll be wrapped up hopefully by the end of the week. Well, the county line should be wrapped up by tomorrow probably. So all our area will be done. Everything else we did has been striped. I don't know if anybody's been across it, but it sure made a world of difference west of nineteen on three oh two over the Frog Creek Road. That's hard to believe. And even three oh two east of nineteen. Don't care. That was better than it was, but it's still ain't no good. Um, one other thing, Johnson Engineering is no more.
Really?
So when it comes to time next year to pick our bridge inspectors, brothers broke up and Lucas is working for Banner down near Mead Street. Or across the street here, I guess, the hood. And I don't know when he gets done with our bridge inspections and he's looking for a job, I guess. Ah, let's see, well, not Pete, damn. So, yep, when he, he'll be in this fall with our bridge inspections and then want to find somebody else. Next year he won't, they won't be taking any more work on. So. I was gonna tell you that last week. I just heard about it, dude, thanks for that. But that's, I believe, well, I had. Anything for me? Bill's? Nothing? She's sneaking that side.
Sneak out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rod. The twenty twenty-three budget here? Do we have for that, Karen?
This is just the, the public hearing that we're required to have in case anybody from the public has any questions about the budget. Haven't received anything, um, by email or mail or otherwise, so if no one is here, then I think we can just move on.
Sounds good. So we've got nine forty, uh, we've got the second reading of application for rezoning of plat of lot four of lot A and lot five of lot A, the northwest quarter of section twenty-one Township ninety-three range fifty-three west. In the fifth PM, Clay County, South Dakota, and replat of lot two of lot A in the northwest quarter of section twenty-one. Township ninety-three range fifty-three west of the fifth PM, Clay County, South Dakota. Hereafter to be known as lot three of lot A in the northwest quarter of section twenty-one Township ninety-three range fifty-three west of the fifth PM, Clay County, South Dakota, from A one to rural residential.
Uh, good morning. This was the rezone we talked about briefly, uh, last week's meeting. Barb is with us here today to answer any more questions at the board, my dad. Apparently you have any more questions for me?
It's already been approved, but plans are. And this, I, I noticed that there, there will no longer be a lot two.
No. Yeah, uh, the, the way this got broke up, you know, you got the two lots there, you got the commercial and then egg or can't, I have to look here. But yeah, there's not gonna be a lot two, it's broken up. I wrote the plant here with the flats upstairs, but. Yeah.
It was next to twenty acres of eggs.
Okay, yeah. And, uh, now you've got a great fire suppression system there for the big building. You're gonna break that up?
Cut together, I'm just, uh, detach and then move them apart so they become three normal bakeries. Right, instead of that big mess.
I'd say probably at least once a month for the last year or so, since it's been for sale before she bought it. We got questions all the time, or I got questions all the time about what's this zone, what's the, uh, just people were trying to buy it, but they can't get financing because of.
They couldn't finance it, there's no cost for it, it's weird.
And again, this won't address the very north lot that's the big mess right now.
I don't know that.
But yeah, the guy did a fire suppression well just east of the fence where the split rail fence or the wooden fences. And, uh, you know, the controls were in the closet, and, uh, when the fire was there, they'd probably been able to supply at least two fire trucks from that well, if it could run.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the change.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Eckler.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Yep.
Uh, joint jurisdiction comprehensive plan delegates to committee.
Good, uh, there's two tracks on this. We're updating the joint jurisdictions zoning ordinance after our discussions with concerning Myron's issue. Piggybacking that is also, um, starting again work on the joint jurisdiction comprehensive plan. Uh, what we did in the past is have two delegates from the planning board, the city planning board and the county planning board meet together with CTA representative as a small delegate meeting. And to make that official, we have to have a vote from the county commission appointing them as delegates. And the two delegates are gonna be Cindy Aiden and Marty Gilbertson. And I think Cindy's gonna be really good to have. She's got a good working relationship with them over at the city, seem to be getting along really well with them, so. Uh, yeah, that's, we'll need a vote for the delegates then, that's all right with the board.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Eckler.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, joint jurisdiction update?
Yeah, like I said, we're doing the, the update on the joint jurisdiction comprehensive plan. And then the, uh, changes to a couple of the issues, couple, cut changes to the zoning ordinance to address some of the issues that we had in the past. Um, hopefully, we're gonna try to get, I think the, what Jose's planning, I think it's workable. We can get the joint jurisdiction one done by hopefully the end of the year, and these changes should be done October, November, hopefully. So that's where we're at on that. And I, we haven't added any kind of joint jurisdiction updates, but we've been meeting with them a lot so far already this year. So I think about half our meetings have been with the city over the last year, so. That's where we're at on that.
And the set committee's gonna do two, two a month?
Uh, yes, two a month, um, probably, uh, second and fourth Monday of every month at, uh, three thirty. I think it's three thirty to four thirty is the plan.
Anything else? County funeral applications? Twenty-two dash zero ten and twenty-two dash zero zero nine.
Yeah, no county funerals so far this year, and then we get two in literally a minute. But, but one came in and the other one called right at the same time, so, uh, two funerals, uh, the first one, uh, number ten. Uh, unmarried, seventy-seven, living in nursing care, uh, children weren't in the picture. Um, there was Medicare and TRICARE for their, um, funeral assistance and TRICARE is the military retirement, uh, healthcare system. They don't cover burials, but there is some burial assistance. We're getting help out as well. And it's about, um, and it was a power of attorney here instead of the, uh, instead of a family member of the funeral home uh, applying for this. It was a nurse at the hospital with the deceased, so. And then the second one, um, she was in the hospital, I think it was, uh, hospice care at the end. Um, Medicare and Medicaid, no family in the picture. About the same thing, so. And it's Culver Funeral Home doing the funeral ceremonies, so.
And these are both, what they're, two thousand dollars a pop for cremation?
Yep, cremation only, yeah. I think for number nine, the POA's got, uh, something already set up for scattering the ashes, so.
Look to approve those.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Eckler.
Yes, motion passes. Anything else, Drew?
Unless you guys have anything for me.
Thank you. Lane, we'll jump to you.
Okay, I don't know what you guys have first on your agenda, but probably the L E M T G.
Yep.
Okay, um, again, that's the yearly contract that we signed with State versus half of my salary. Looked through it pretty much the same as it is every year. One of those things, it's really is a pain, but we need the cash, so.
All about money.
Yeah, it is. And it's not nearly as big a pain as it used to be, so. But just need to have you approve it and then we can get it sent back to them.
I'll move it through.
So I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Eckler.
Yes, motion passes. Is there something I need to sign?
Um, I think there's a thing that Carrie needs to have you sign.
Yeah.
Uh, just sign it and email it to me, and then I'll, I can email it back to Alan.
And I'll have that rezoning ordinance for you to sign too.
Okay.
Print those real quick.
Uh, drone insurance and pilots.
Okay, uh, we'll do the insurance part first. Um, I thought I seen Caitlin on there. Um, but Caitlin and Dick are on the drone board, so, uh, Um, but Caitlin and Dick are on the drone board, so uh, we got the new one in. It's been paid for. Um, I got the tail number for it. I made the stickers this weekend, so. Actually planning on getting it on there today, but. Uh, it's not in service yet because we don't have insurance on it for it yet, and this is insurance not covered. By safety benefits. They don't have a drone policy for it. The old uh, drone. Or the, yeah, the older one we'll call it, but um, that one for liability only has been running five. Five sixteen a year or something along that lines. Um, if we just put liability for both, which is a million dollar policy on each. Um, I did get two quotes Jensen's out of Beersford, which is who we have the other one with. And then Sherry Stockwell down at Hub for the other. Um, the liability part's pretty close, a million on each, uh, Hub is nine fourteen a year. And Jensen's is eight seventy. Um, so it actually goes down per. Per drone. Um, but then where we, I want your guys' opinion, your all's opinion. Is Dan, do we want damage? Coverage for the new. The new drone, um. Damage uh, through hub, uh, up to thirty thousand dollars worth of coverage is thirty-two twenty-three a year. And Jensen's is twenty-four forty-nine. So you're talking twenty-five hundred or thirty-two hundred dollars a year for damage coverage.
And this is damage to the drone?
Damage to the drone. Liability will cover damage to everything else. So if we have liability on both and. And damage for the new drone. Uh, through hub is forty-one thirty-seven a year and Jensen's is thirty-three nineteen a year.
So about ten percent value the.
Yeah. Yes. Um.
Have you crashed one yet?
Oh, yes, yeah. Um.
And the only reason I ask is what, what did the cost fix it?
Uh, the last one was nothing. Um, it was looking for an individual who ran across the river from Andy. And I had, the old drone has battery issues and the battery was going down quickly, so instead of it in a camper. Went out of the way and I made a coniferous landing. Nice little soft spruce, so, but. The only other time it crashed was again, a wind issue and new blades was like forty dollars. So.
I'm assuming that you deduct the ball out too, right?
There is, um, one of them I think was like fifteen hundred, so.
We paid the first fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just about have to send this thing through a wood chipper.
Uh, is, to be honest, that's almost, that's my thoughts exactly.
Yeah, one, one year plus the deductibles, that's forty-five hundred bucks, right?
Yeah.
If you had a. Sounds like you do a lot of the repairs yourself.
Um, they're made to do that.
Yeah.
Um, like the motors are probably, well, the electronics is gonna be the worst part of it. But you really have to crash hard to break the electronics anymore.
Yeah.
You know, the motors are probably a hundred dollars a piece and you do, there's like four screws and they're done.
Fuselage damage, what's uh, what it costs just to buy another fuselage?
It it's not really built like that. It's more of a box around the electronics. And everything's kind of connected to it. You know, the biggest part might be the landing gear. The oh, that would break and again, you're probably talking a couple hundred dollars maybe.
What's the new one cost?
This whole system costs twenty-nine. But.
Like say, if you were, if you were halfway across the river again and it bumped into the river, you didn't recover it. It's those sorts of issues, I think, where you can't really recover it. It's where we would have a total loss.
Yep. Right, that's what I mean, the total loss of the land, it was twenty-nine hundred bucks.
No, twenty-five thousand.
The twenty-nine hundred. That'd be great.
Yeah, we'd love that.
Yeah, and there are laws against technically, if you. Don't talk to the Rangers, you can't fly over the Missouri, the Missouri, since it is national. Land. If you actually talk to the feds, they go whatever, la 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 la. If you take off not on their property and fly over, they're okay with it. So it's, it's just one of those things and. Quite honestly, I think between that or the middle of a cornfield when you're a mile away is the only places that you'll ever. Probably not be able to find it.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I guess I'm, I'm leaning towards just liability only, but. Ultimately, it's all y'all's property, so I figured I'd let you make that decision if you want. Damage or not. I mean, liability we have to have because if something goes wrong and it falls out of the sky, that's, that's just a bad deal.
Yeah, liability alone makes, makes sense to me.
Same.
You just, those, those, those premiums are so high.
Yeah, which is why we didn't do it the last time when the other one was new too, because I think it was roughly the same prices back then even. Okay.
I'd move that we go with just liability only.
Got a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Anything else, Lane?
Um, yeah, there is, and I'm assuming you want me to go with Jensen's who's the lower one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And currently, they currently have our insurance and, okay, I'll contact. Um, the other is the pilots, the pilot situation. Uh, currently I am the only one. And there have been some. Parties interested in joining, but they are not county employees. And in the past, we have always had them be county employees for uh. Insurance and work comp and all of that. Uh, Caitlin is on, I think, yep, so you're right, or at least her name there. Um, and Dick are on the board and we've had discussions. And it's going to be up to the commission to decide if we want to do it, if we want to. Create uh, a new position with the county, uh, just as a drone pilot. Um, the pay would still be the same, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars a year. But we could put them under our liability and work comp. They would not get any benefits, none of that. Um, it would just be the paying them a small stipend for flying when need to. Training and uh, being able to do it. Um, I would first see not needing any more than two or three people. But I already have it in my budget for a thousand dollars to pay the. Because that's what we had been paying. That covers the salaries and payroll taxes and all that. And I have, Carrie says it would be very, very minor to add them to the liability work. But it would be a new position. New actual employee position for the county, so. That would be your, you all's decision on whether or not to do that.
Sounds like it's a reasonable thing to do. Since you're our only pilot at this point, we really should have backup. To you. And uh, for times where you're in the. Out fishing or something.
So if they were an employee. And we just say you had to let them go. Do they get to collect unemployment then? Yes. But that's based on salary, correct?
It is. Um, we have had situations in the past where they worked full-time for. Somebody else, another employer out there, and we still had to pay unemployment because they were let go from that position or they. You know, whatever the situation was. So that's always a risk. Um, we had that situation with a med tech in the jail one time and. I went rounds with the Department of Labor and I did not win that argument, so. We did have to pay unemployment for that individual, even though we were not a full-time employer. Always a risk.
And no way around that.
No.
Because we have to make it an employee, put them on the liability.
If you want, I can check with safety benefits, because I'm trying to. Well, yeah, you would have to be, because the fire departments do the same thing because they're volunteers. They are, you are whatever, Wakanda. You are considered a non-compensated city employee to get on them.
So I, I think that the only issue might be the liability insurance because with workers' comp, we can designate. Like the poll workers, for example, are paid and they're covered under workers' comp. I don't know about liability insurance in the case of the drone pilots, but workers' comp shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, and well. Quite honestly, it's taking, uh, one of the dispatchers wants to do it. And you know, if you're out looking for somebody running from law enforcement. If you're gonna get shot in the middle of crossfire, that might be the time that it happens, so. We need to make sure that they're covered somehow, right? And the liability, again, the, the drone would have it, but. You know, if somebody thinks that they're out looking at children with it, you know, we better have some coverage on. The person itself, so. Now, if you want, I, it, there is no necessarily a hurry on this. Um, maybe I can talk to safety benefits a little bit and see what. They recommend and see if we can come up with some costs on it, maybe. Uh, Caitlin, is there anything you want to add or subtract?
No, I think you've covered it all really well, Lane, as far as where we're at and the need for another drone pilot. Um, but the logistics of it, I think, are a little. We're still working through those, so I agree, otherwise.
Table till next time, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Time to think about this.
Yeah, I'll get a hold of safety benefits and see what, what all that actually, what they think. Because, yeah, that's who our liabilities through to isn't. Liabilities through them.
A little bit there.
Right.
Okay.
There's the little one. My boxing.
Okay, um, I'll get back to you on that then. And as far as the. The other room goes, if I can get to it next week. Um, we have that hazmat exercise, but I may try to move, start moving tables, may not look pretty on the twentieth. But we'll try to get you guys moved down there for that then. Right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Andy. Well, just conducted the sale at the front door of courthouse for this property that was basically a part of Bunyan's parking lot. I had a bid, Bunyan's LLC bid of one hundred dollars. I got no other bids, so clear profit sold subject to your.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. At least we've got it cleared up now. Oh, COVID nineteen leave personnel policy discussion. Oh, don't let me forget to sign that quit claim today too.
Okay.
Karen sent an email, correct? Everybody get to see that.
I think I forwarded that all to you guys.
And I, I, you know, I, I, I hadn't thought about it before I read the mail, but I think she's probably got it about right. That at this point it makes sense to revert to, um, you know, our policy. You know, our regular sick leave policy, um, you know, we don't create special policies for flu. You know, which is, you know, at this point, a similar, a similar situation. Um, you know, it's, I, I, I think COVID's really become endemic. I don't understand why I haven't gotten it yet, but almost everybody I know has. I, you know, which is, it's part of the landscape and so I. I would move to revert to, um, you know, normal sick leave policy.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, reschedule September thirteenth meeting to September twentieth.
I will be in here next week, um, for the county convention and, um. There were some things that needed to be advertised by all tech engineering, um, so. I kind of advised them to go ahead and advertise for the twentieth. Um, I had talked to Travis and. We thought it just kind of made sense to move the meeting to the next week instead of going to like a Thursday meeting or something like that, so. If that's good with you guys, then that's what we'd like to do.
Motion to approve it.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes. Um, opioid settlement contract.
Um, Lexi and I received an email just asking. Who would be the person in charge of signing this contract when the time comes to distribute the money? Um, I was under the impression they would have that contract to me by now, but I haven't received it yet. Um, they did ask if we want a DocuSign or a contract mailed to us. And I told them DocuSign would be fine because we could still print it, um, print the PDF and have Travis sign it, so. Haven't received it yet. I'll stick it on the agenda when we do, so.
And that was like twenty-six hundred dollars, right, that they estimated? And that was just a, it's just a one-time payment, correct?
Honestly, I'm not certain which, which one, so I'll take a look at it when we, because we've been asked about a couple of different things. And if this is the state deal, I, I think that is their estimate of things. I don't know what it will actually end up being. So.
I suppose we'll know by the time we have to sign, right?
Right. Well.
Maybe.
Yes, and. Yeah.
I guess it doesn't matter.
I was gonna say, I don't think, and I've shared this with you guys before, I think our recovery of this is going to be very, very tiny. Um, if we were talking about methamphetamine cases, then we would. That'd be great for our county, but fortunately, I suppose, in that avenue, the opioid. Um, percentage of funding will be relatively small for us, but it doesn't hurt to sign in on it and the Attorney General's Office, I know. Um, had encouraged that, and so I, I was under the impression we're still in negotiation stages of, of things. And so that's why they've come up with these projections, but, um. By the time we get that contract, I can check in with them and see if there's anything more solid as well.
Well, since it's not a bill, I guess it's not as pertinent to know the exact number.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my understanding that signing the contract is just saying, we'll accept the money. Right. If any is recovered, right?
Anything else on that one?
No.
We're good. Twenty-twenty-three budget discussion? Anybody find any more money?
We don't have to finalize anything till the end of the month, correct?
Right. Well, probably, I know I've had this kind of as an ongoing thing on the agenda, just in case there was something to discuss, but. I think on the twentieth, we'll probably wanna, um, discuss. The overall changes that we've made, which haven't been, it hasn't really been much, I mean, I've shifted some things. From maintenance over into the courthouse, um, lines, and Scott will be coming in for his budget request, too, but. Other than that, I think it's, you know, the big question is those non-mandated, um, funding opportunities, so. We'll probably discuss maybe again on the twentieth, because the twenty-seventh is when we have to adopt it, so.
You know, I, I did have one thought about those non-mandated expenses, which is that there's one of those expenses that's really different. From the others, um, and that is the, the libraries. And, uh, you know, I, 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 they're really government. Um, and our citizens take advantage of them, and the alternative to us. Um. Uh, contributing is that citizens individually will begin to have to pay for library cards. And I, I just hate to see that happen. Um, so I, you know, I, I, I think that's, that's, that's the one. Um, on the non-mandated list, that, you know, I think. On the twentieth, we might, we might wanna talk about it, I mean, I, I, I think libraries are fundamentally different. Um, and, uh, you know, they, they, they were part of the founding of the US, I mean, it was always thought that. Free libraries should be, um, available to every citizen in order to sustain a democracy, and. Yeah, so, so I, I, I'd just like to talk about that on the twentieth.
Anything else? Oh, we got two more meetings before we have to finalize it, so. Um, Scott's here for his budget.
Morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, uh. Working on this, saying I. That final figure carried that, that repairs maintenance, let's stay the same. Are you at twenty-six thousand on that also?
Um, at this point, whatever you request, that's, that's where we'd be at.
We have something added there, or just you added Andy?
No, I, I had already made that switch by the time that I gave you that latest spreadsheet, so whatever, whatever you request is what. Yeah.
So, um. Yeah, professional fees and services. Did, uh, did it a little differently there, I took, I put in there any recurring fees and services. I think if you, I. Should have one of these, that kinda shows what those are. The different vendors that be used on an annual or biannual basis, so that'd be three or five years, or stuff like that. That's, that figure came from. I'm gonna tell you on some of that stuff, get down there to the carpet cleaning, annual maintenance. Biannual maintenance, tile floors, painting exterior windows, that was all stat in the dark. I work with companies trying to get some pricing, several of the carpet. Carpet's pretty firm number. So the retaining wall maintenance, which is very important out here on this wall, that we look at on an annual basis and have a contract. Do what we need to do out there. Tell them cracks, this and that, we just got a lot, got a lot of cracks, and we almost have to prevent this through the expansion. Water getting in there, freezing, and expanding stuff, so. Um, that number, I, I worked with a guy, he never got back to me, so I just threw that number in there. It seems kinda high, but easier for a whole week, forty hours, a hundred bucks. You know, just pretty realistic, you know, by time control and material. And I don't think it's a hundred dollars, I just pulled that out, so. The biannual maintenance, to maintain the tile floors, um, I could start doing that also. System out there, you can put down rejuvenation system that he cleans, puts down. Hey, call the seater, but it's not, it's not a wax, the slippery surface on it, it's a seam that fills with the water. Penetrates, gets down into the pores of the tile and the grouts, and the dirt stays up on the surface. The cleaning of the exterior windows, that's the number I just had, great, I have no idea what that number might be. Reached out to several vendors, two or four, it all said they're common or competent. I sent them pictures and stuff, I don't know, they'd be a little scared, and skip this whole building, like this. So, that's where those, if they have any question on those numbers there, where I'm coming up with them, or.
The walker construction, snow.
Yeah, that, that I just put in there, I know we're talking about doing it ourselves, I just put that number in there for the month from last year. And I'll have to go talk to the chief of police about the garage, the underground garage. I've talked to some of the other officers, after the other chief retired. As possible, some guys over there, about, that's probably a good idea, but they would have to make sure they stayed out of there. They pack that down, they're, that's just. And the guy from the city said, said he's more, he's had a whole war on. So, I, I'll have to go have that conversation with the chief over there. But, that's, yeah, so that number will probably come out of there.
What about the elevator?
The elevator?
Scott, is your microphone on?
That, what's that?
Is your button up on your microphone?
No, it wasn't.
Sorry, I just had someone say they couldn't hear you well.
Oh, that's fine, the. I did a little legwork on that, I called some competitors, and that number's kinda right in line. It seems kinda high to me, but all the other companies I talked to, and I've had a phone call out to Cone, at least. Once again, it's just hard to get, get return calls. There seems to be a three tiers to most of these programs, you get, you know, good. You get fair, good, and better, but we're on the better, we're on the top tier, which means we're paying out premium dollar. But we want for nothing, because if they come back for repairs, repairs are covered, parts are covered.
Right.
So, you know, um, is it worth it? The last time we went down here, we were down for several days waiting for a part to show up, so, you know, I haven't. Like I said, I've, I gotta reach back out to him, talk to him a little bit, so I thought, well, you know. Are we better going with the lower-tiered program? And buying some parts and having them on hand here, so we can get up and running easier, quicker, but then. I don't know, what do you keep on hand, you know, that's kinda their world, they might have a better idea, but. Just long story short, as, as high as that number is, that.
If there's been recurrent, certain parts that have gone down then?
Well, I haven't been there long enough.
Yeah.
They might go in there, I would have to call and talk to them and see.
Yeah.
The last one was a relay, you know, those things last up to twenty years.
Right.
For the next one, my last five years, and so. Yeah, some of the parts I was here, too expensive to keep on hand, but.
Yeah.
So, I don't know where we're at there, I don't really know what the best way to approach that is. That's where that one comes from.
On the cleaning of the external windows, that's, that's to do the whole courthouse?
Yes, sir.
Four years, I wonder if it'd be a little less intimidating for them if we did one side a year.
It might be, I could ask them and see, as I said.
Would probably.
Well, they know they got it.
More, long term.
When they get, go ahead, I'm sorry.
At least we'd get somebody to do it, perhaps.
Right. I think when they look at it, and they think, oh my gosh, now I gotta get lift in there, I gotta take the screen off every window, that's. Four or six screws per screen, gotta clean it up for the back, I don't know what's scaring them off. So I, I'll just have to reach back out to those three companies and, and see. But I thought about that also, you know, to keep the cost down, just do a side a year or something, and. Just have, have it revolving like that. Yeah, I can look into that. Any other questions on that? When I did this, pretty much went, sky's the limit, whatever's in my mind, whatever I'm thinking. It was laid out here on paper for you guys to see, on these recurring fees and services, I think you got a list of projects. And the different, broken down to the different entities, where they go, what the projects are. We've done some in twenty-twenty-two, and what I'm thinking for twenty-twenty-three, you know, obviously, you guys have the big red pen, so. I'll go wherever you tell me to go and do whatever, uh, you want me to do on, on that project, besides, for some reason, I didn't get that printed off. For myself, but. I can try to answer any questions on there that any of you have.
Yeah, the, um, in the safety center project, does that replace well pump? The one that we've been talking about not doing?
I just left that on there, yeah, I just have a figure there, but I don't have it. Any one particular year or anything, so it's just, so there's a number there, if we ever decide to do it, we have a number to look at. So, yeah. That's not scheduled, so.
Great.
Any other questions on any of those?
And we've more or less decided that the, the well, well pump is probably option, that we're not mandated.
Right, yep, yep.
To sit on that.
Right.
So we shouldn't have to pull it, we shouldn't have to pull up and abandon it at this point.
Right, okay.
Leave it the way it is.
Okay.
If we decide we need to later, we can.
Right.
Start from where we're at.
Yep.
As I pointed out earlier to you, and I, I brought it up to the commission, too, so they would know it was coming, you know, possibly. And, uh, that company that we'd be buying parts from, has, even during this inflationary period. They've really been good at keeping their prices, uh, consistent, like ten percent difference over two years ago.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, like I said, I just left the number in there, so we had it, if we ever decide to put it in the schedule, can.
Right.
Yeah, it's kind of, that's kind of a wish list project list. Anybody else have anything on that? Go on, discuss.
Yeah, I, what? Let's see, one other thing would be, um, you know, you've got a, some, uh, eighteen thousand dollars in snow removal equipment.
He jumped to that one, okay.
Oh.
That's fine, you can go wherever you want.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, but then we also put in, um, four thousand for, uh. For rocker construction, snow removal, so it seems like it ought to be one, one of the other, but not both.
Yeah, I, like I said, I just left that in there, on the reoccurring fees and expenses, in case you're, for some reason, we, we decide not to go. The direction of doing it ourselves this year, and that I just put in there. I didn't do a lot of research on that, I did just a little bit on the web, you know, um. If we're gonna get in that operational mode of work, um, we're staying, uh, you know, staying open when it's snowing, and we gotta keep the sidewalks cleared off. I get a little leery about that big piece of equipment out there, when people are coming and going, and things can get pretty dangerous, you get a lot of blind spots, and you can't hear nothing in there. Um, as we know, we had an accident here, what, seven or eight years ago across the street, a matter of fact, I talked to that individual just before that happened, but. So, I get some concerns about that, surely don't need an eighteen thousand dollar piece of equipment to keep sidewalks cleared off, but. Um, this, it's, uh, it's one of those pieces of equipment you stand up on, you can have a plow on it, you can have a snow blower on it. Like I said, I didn't do a lot of research on it. It was just the thought in my head, you know, cause there is quite a bit of sidewalk to maintain, you know, if we're gonna maintain it when we're open to the public. That might be something that's a little safer to use, um.
Kind of would you, what, what would you buy for the eighteen K?
It's something like those. Um, everybody makes, Bobcat makes one, you stand up on it, you can have a bucket on it, you can have. Put a snow blower attached on it, and blow snow with it, you can push snow with it. Uh, some get real crazy, you can put salt sprayers on them, the sky's kinda limit.
So it's sort of like this, stand on the rear lawn mower?
Right, exactly, except for you move snow with it.
Yeah.
And there's one out there, it's part of the top of the line, does everything. Grow the grass for it, and it's twenty-eight grand, so I kinda backed away from that one real quick. So, but, like I said, I didn't do a lot of research on that, we're just kinda getting into the snow removal thing, it was just something I was thinking about, so I. Like I said, I tried to wanna be transparent, and just put it down there, so. I mean, it's obviously something that doesn't have to be purchased, but, and obviously, I wouldn't run right out. Buy that piece of equipment without doing a lot more research, I just kinda looked online and. Found one that was around twenty-eight thousand, and found this one at the bottom of the eighteen thousand, there's quite a bit of difference between the two, but I think. Unless you're in the business of moving snow professionally up north in Minneapolis, the twenty-eight thousand dollars is probably.
A little overkill.
Yeah, a little, yeah, yeah. So that, yeah, that's what, that's what that's for, pickup, I just put that in there, I know we're getting a pickup in January from the county highway department, so.
Supposed to be.
Supposed to be, so I just put that in there, just in case that doesn't happen. And, uh, just in case what we get, might, may not have a floor left in, I don't know. So, what kind of shape for that, um, so that's the fast bow. I just go up the list there. Uh, look, it's new restroom cleaning equipment for here. I'm gonna have to kind of self-explanatory, you know, what we're using here is pretty outdated tech, meat.
Talk to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'll get this in front of me, the, so, yeah, I mean, the old mountain bucket ringer's just outdated stuff, and it's not used anymore, so. I was looking to get in some different cleaning equipment for here, I was looking to get in some, um, equipment to do the windows in here. And obviously, we all know how high they are. And then we all know, we got a lot of dusting to do, it's high access dusting, so that's what that's. Which one?
The dusting?
The duster.
Well, it ain't gonna. It's just a long pole with a specially shaped. Duster on top, and basically, it's gonna rain down on you, and you're gonna have to clean it up as it comes down, I don't see another way to do it. I've got, I've gotten up there and vacuumed some off and stuff like that, but, you know, I think this might be easier, so you just stay on the ground.
Safer anyway.
Yeah, safer. So, uh, we gotta walk behind scrubber here, that hasn't been used for, I don't know how long, um. But I think it'd be beneficial to replace that with something just a little bit smaller, a little more convenient to get around in here. So we can get the hallways done, uh, a little more efficiently, and probably a little more often if we have that. That walk behind. Uh, the next one, the motor scrubber is. It's, it's a battery-operated, uh, device that, uh, you can carry. Is, it's a battery operated, uh, device that, uh, you can carry, you just. Trying to think of what an example I could give. I guess you could kind of say it's like a, it's battery powered. But it's, it's probably like the size of a small handheld weed eater, and it's got, you can put, uh. Cylindrical or rodeo, uh, rotary brushes on there for cleaning floors, cleaning off the steps, et cetera. That's what that's about. And then the rest is kind of self-explanatory. The computer, I. When my office comes into being, I'd like to get a little bit bigger computer. Um, and the reason for that is, we have this, uh, equipment over at the safety center. The, the HVAC equipment's all on a, what's called Medisys, it's controlled by Medisys program. It's gonna be really difficult, kind of awkward. Because the computer screen is so small on the laptop to see what's all going on there and the building, get a really good picture of it, control it and run it. So that was the reason for the computer upgrade. Then the, obviously, the other three items going up the list are. Furniture and finally cabinet for the office. Once again, those are just numbers I kind of grabbed, I did a little bit looking around on the internet. It could be a little high. Um, and then you get up to the top. A snow Joe is, is, um. There's another piece of equipment that's battery operated. It has rubber paddles on it. For getting the snow off the sidewalks. I think it'd really be handy when you are doing that for the steps, obviously. And also when you're doing that little bit of cleanup in between bringing, bringing your skid steer back on site. I think it'd be handy and beneficial to have that. That's, that four hundred dollar figures is, uh. Including the machine and a couple batteries for it. I think that we, we should definitely get and have, actually have it on site for. Uh, twenty twenty-two, so. That's kind of where I'm at with the equipment. My thoughts on that. Any other questions on that or any of my other stuff that? I have.
So the column that's for twenty twenty-two, we have the money for that?
Um. I'm gonna guess, we're probably gonna need to do a supplement of some sort, um. You know, as we get closer to the end of the year here.
We've got money. Yeah, that's available that we can transfer?
Yes.
Just a couple key questions out there.
Yeah, valid questions.
So the, really the ones on the new budget are, are pretty much the pickup, the snow removal.
Right, yep. Oh.
In that, in that section.
Right, correct. That's the thing, we don't need to pick up, so. And I got that price, um, handed forward to me. Sales brochure, whatever, from mistake surplus, and that's kind of what. Pick up, what was going for on that website. That's kind of where I got that number.
So on the twentieth, are we gonna have, this is all gonna be in there, it's got budget. So we'll have it updated.
Yeah.
So we'll know kind of.
Yeah.
We are for dollars.
Yeah, I mean, it really, I mean, I'm not throwing a lot at you guys, and that's some big figures. But, like I said, when I see something, I'm just kind of gathering numbers and information on it. Yeah, and then we can make a good decision on what to do.
Right.
Back up just a little bit, back to the projects. I did get a number from AMS on a pitch roof. And it's about eight thousand dollars more than repairing the flat roof. It's a hundred and eighteen thousand. For the pitched roof on that building. I did talk to Missy O'Connor over there. I need to get back and have a further conversation with her. That south room is, is in her ballpark, and she's been getting that roof inspected by guarantee for, I don't know how many years. Uh, they never found a leak over there. Um, inspection, they always go through inspection flying colors. Um, I mean, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I mean, uh, I don't have my notes right in with me right now, but I think those other two smaller roofs, one was like eleven grand, another was like nine grand. To do that sidewall tie-in, to get that membrane back where it's supposed to be. So I mean, that's an option too, just fix what. Needs to be fixed. We had to do some major, what I'm gonna call. Leak repair, uh, on that section where the extension office is, just had a persistent leak up there, so we had to go up and do a tie-in on that wall. What was, that was not cheap, that was about three thousand dollars to do that. Um. But they said, when and if we ever go with the rest of the project, obviously, you know, it's three thousand dollars off the top of that eleven. I think that section might have been eleven thousand. There'd be three thousand, be right off the top of that, so. More to think about. And then I did get a number on desk. Which was about. Three thousand more dollars than I thought it would be. I was figuring five thousand, it's closer to eight. Seven thousand nine oh eight eighteen. That's just one person, that's just one topic. Travis and I have talked, I've had difficulty finding somebody to pick up that project and give me a number on it, so. I can do a little more looking around, see who else I can come up with. Obviously, we probably want to get some prices on it. But that's kind of where I'm at on that.
So it seems like a lot.
Yes, the.
It's not even bulletproof.
Yeah. Roofing costs have just gone crazy, like that one gentleman was here a couple, three months ago, presented, you know. Went too long ago, it was seven dollars a square foot, then boom, it's up over twenty-five dollars a square foot, put a roof on a building. So it's just crazy. You know, and maybe if we decide to do some repairs on there by this time next year, maybe it goes down, you know. Dropping the material. Yeah, I mean, when you get these estimates from these guys, they're only good for fifteen days, so. That tells you how quick things are changing, so.
Yeah, exchange rates are, are, are very, very, very good, and so any materials that come along and stuff.
The other thing that I don't have on here that I'm looking at, working on, is. The bathrooms up on third floor, the way the floor is elevated. I'm looking at getting that. Knocked down to the same level as the rest of the floor. So that would mean all that plumbing would be exposed down below. Or for in the process of putting in a drop ceiling, nobody's gonna see it. Um, so I do have, uh. A gentleman come from structural engineers associate, uh, Sioux Falls. I've sent him the blueprints, I've sent him pictures. And we've talked, he said he's pretty confident that there's nothing there that's. Structural, which I was pretty sure there wasn't, but I just want to be, make. Sure. Before.
They just pass a false floor to accommodate the traps and everything.
Correct, yep. Yep. Yep.
So there's two floors there now.
Yep. So if we go through with this courthouse courtroom security project that we're also looking into, that, um. They're gonna. Extend, expand that bath, both bathrooms.
Right.
Which really makes no point, no sense, if we can't knock that floor out.
Right.
Um, I know we got numbers from that gentleman. But. That doesn't reflect any of what I'm talking about, so. But to expand it without doing that, well, you, you got a choice, either knock it out or. Or to meet it, which is kind of crazy, so. That's kind of some of the stuff I got going on.
And those projects up there apparently don't include electrical.
Correct.
Within that project.
Right.
Too far probably. We'd still have to. Get electrical, but there was something else.
Fire alarms.
Fire.
That's a store.
Yeah.
The door security. Yeah, that, that's additional, right?
And hopefully there'd be some grant money if we move quickly enough to.
I. I can't remember for sure.
My, my recollection is that we're gonna have to have a matching portion of that.
Right.
Yeah, I don't remember what the percentage was.
And I have a thought, but I don't want to say it out loud, I'm wrong. I thought I recalled, but I.
I know.
Yeah, um, so I, you know. I don't know if we can just say, okay, we think it's gonna be this much more for the electrical and the. And the safety and the bathroom. I think. Probably on that grant, it's probably gotta be kind of a solid firm number, because we had to wait for the contractor to get back to us so we could apply for the grant, so. You know, I didn't want to be holding up the whole show for this bathroom thing, so I told him just to keep rolling forward and try to figure it out as we got into it. But I imagine. It's not gonna be cheap, or nothing is. I'm, I'm throwing a number out, about thirty grand. Start messing in the bathrooms and that might be, that may not be enough. So.
Probably about enough bad.
It's all the good news I got today. I don't mean to bring bad news, I just want everybody to kind of see what I'm seeing and what I'm thinking, and you guys can always. Say, whoa, Scott.
Yeah, thank you for that.
You gotta slow down a little bit, or can you look at this, add this, or whatever, so. That's what I have.
Anything else for Scott? Thank you.
Thank you.
Executive session?
Um.
Uh, just, do we have anything?
I don't have anything. I might have accidentally brushed to take it off there, but the if necessary label.
Okay.
I don't have anything, though.
We're to the end of the agenda.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Uh, Rokel.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yeah.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes, we're adjourned, thank you.